I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
And Councilmember Woodard.
Accounted for.
And Councilmember Payne Donovan asked to be excused.
Move to excuse Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Second.
So it's a move and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? He has been excused. And so we have, oh, first of all, we have the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council, a few things to mention tonight. The first is a reminder that the April 18th meeting, your meeting scheduled for next week, has been canceled. So we won't be here for that. And a couple other items. We do have the budget survey that is open and it closes on Sunday. So there's still an opportunity to provide input to the city on budget priorities for 2025 and 2026. The next stage of construction on 66th starts as early as Tuesday. So that project is moving along. We have sent information out to the public, make sure that people are aware of that, and we'll also do a reminder next week. So, mention that. The Veterans Memorial Park Upper Plateau Public Meeting is here. That's for the design of the upper plateau of Veterans Park. Meeting is here at 6:30. And unfortunately, I did not have a date, but I think it's next Tuesday night, right? So next Tuesday night here in this room. And the Community Satisfaction Survey closes on Thursday, the 18th. And we've gotten some good responses to that, but there have been some hurdles as well. And we'll look at addressing what those hurdles are next year when we continue this process. The Comprehensive Plan Open House Vision 2024 Online Survey is also open, and we're going to keep that open for a while because we want to gather as much information as we can from members of the community about what the future of our community looks like. And then there is a big Arbor Day event on the 20th, on Saturday, the 20th. And if we get nice weather like we've had today, and hopefully the next couple days, we can see up to 100 people. So the Ivy League is going to be focused on Terrace Creek Park that day, but I also want to remind everybody that Ken Cortmanch, who started this event and is retiring, this will be his last one. As an employee at least, hopefully he'll come back and volunteer in the future. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions, comments for the City Manager? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Jeff, for the updates. Just a quick question on the Arbor Day event to make sure we're all on the same page. Is our folks who are not joining the Ivy League over at Terrace Creek, are they meeting here at 9:00 AM? Is that...
Yeah, correct. So there'll be several different places around the community where people can volunteer and have fun in our parks.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we're going to move on to a very, very special celebration. We're going to have a proclamation for Children's Day. And do I give this to Carolyn? Our Assistant Deputy City Manager. Okay. Do you need a...
As a Turkish resident of Montlake Terrace, I'm honored to be here today. For me, this initiative symbolizes not only cultural recognition, but also profound commitment to our children's well-being and future. In Turkey, Children's Day in April is a day of immense significance, dedicated entirely to our children, the architects of tomorrow. It embodies the spirit of Mustafa Kemal Atatürk, who declared that children are the future of any nation. One unique tradition in Turkey on April 23rd involves government officials symbolically giving up their seats to children for the day, allowing them to experience leadership roles and decision-making processes firsthand. Additionally, this holiday is a special occasion where children from all over the world come to Turkey to perform their traditional dances and songs, further enriching the cultural exchange and understanding. This proclamation reflects our shared values of honoring the potential within every child. Today in Montlake Terrace, we take a significant step towards fostering a community where every child is cherished, empowered, and supported. By celebrating Children's Day, we affirm our dedication to providing them with a safe, inclusive, and nurturing environment to thrive. Children are not just a promise of tomorrow, but the reality of today. Sorry. We must commit to nurturing their dreams, safeguarding their rights, and building a future where they can flourish. Thank you for recognizing the significance of this day. And together, we can ensure that every child in our city knows that they are valued, cherished, and celebrated. In Mustafa Kemal Atatürk's words, "Dear young ladies and gentlemen, all of you are the future's flowers, stars, and the brightness of fortunate destiny. You are the ones who will truly illuminate the country. Consider how important and valuable you are yourselves, and work accordingly."[365.83][365.83][applause]
The City of Mountlake Terrace Proclamation, Children's Day, April 2024. Whereas we are reminded on this day to nurture, protect, and support all children in our lives, and whereas young people all around us exemplify compassion, tolerance, and protecting others, and whereas for over a century, countries around the world have promoted the well-being of children, then in 1925, International Children's Day was proclaimed in Geneva during the World Conference on Child Welfare. And whereas during April, the following places celebrate Children's Day: Taiwan, Hong Kong, Palestine, Bolivia, Haiti, Colombia, Turkey, and Mexico. And whereas in Taiwan and Hong Kong, Children's Day is celebrated April 4th, emphasizing the importance of future generations, along with endeavors to promote their general well-being. The day features family-friendly functions, fun activities, and sporting events. And whereas in the Republic of Turkey, Children's Day is celebrated April 23rd, traditionally, politicians hand over their seats to children for a day to govern, providing an opportunity for adults to listen to children's ideas. And whereas in Mexico, the Day of Children is celebrated April 30, where parents, schools, and businesses focus on making children feel special and loved through games, activities, and gifts. And whereas in Mountlake Terrace, the city provides parks, recreation, and open spaces for children to explore, listens to children while encouraging civic engagement, and offering volunteer opportunities. And now therefore, I, our Mayor Kyoko Matsumoto Wright, the Mayor of the City of Mountlake Terrace, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim April 23rd Children's Day.[491.87][491.87][applause] All right. So to accept the proclamation, we have children and young people from the Brighton School Choir, Briar Terrace Middle School, and Mountlake Terrace High School. They also will have a presentation for us. Students, please come forward to accept the proclamation and meet the City Council. Yes. Okay. I have the honor of introducing our groups that are going to come up and share with us tonight. I wanted to thank you all so much for being here. Planning projects for the future has long-term lasting impacts on this generation of children and their future families. To build on what Commissioner Onat told us about the Turkish celebration of Children's Day and the robust international communities who celebrate youth, the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Commission invited youth to both accept the proclamation tonight and then share their love, hope, and ideas about how to build community in our city. This is a time to emphasize the importance of children and young people. Just look at the energy here tonight. This is pretty awesome to have on a Thursday night City Council meeting. So, tonight we have a short presentation by three groups. We will start off with the 4th and 5th graders from Brighton School, led by music teacher Kaori Akota. And they will sing "Big World, Small World."
Many people, many lands, many, many faces, many hands, many, many stories, many ways, many, many seasons, many days, many, many places, many parts, many, many voices, many hearts, many, many countries, many tribes, many, many children, many lives, many lives. The world is big and yet it's small, filled with life, home to all. The world is old and yet it's young. The world is us and we are one. And we are one. Many people, many lands, many, many faces, many hands, many, many stories, many ways, many, many seasons, many days, many, many places, many parts, many, many voices, many hearts, many, many countries, many tribes, many, many children, many lives, many lives. The world is big and yet it's small, filled with life, home to all. The world is old and yet it's young. The world is us and we are one.
Well, next up, thank you so much for the beautiful song. I'm sitting up here tearing up. So, to follow our song, we have student leaders from the Black Student Union and the Latin Student Union at the Mountlake Terrace High School, Amaya Brazil, Tesnem, Katie, and Brasava. I think you'll find that their work is similar to the DEI Commission and City Council's initiatives to promote an understanding and acceptance of our growing cultural diversity and create equitable and inclusive cultural policies and help community members from all backgrounds to learn, grow, and thrive.[1691.62][1691.62][applause]
Well, hello. My name is Amaya Brazil, and I am the BSU president. I currently have Tez Neeem, she is our secretary for BSU. We have Katie, this is the LSU president. And then we have Brasavi, and she's our BSU PR. So I'm going to hand it off to Tez Neeem.
Hello. So what is BSU? Our Black Student Union is a club created for Black students who are a part of the African Dispora, a space to feel heard and seen. Our goals for this club is to enhance the experience and address the needs of Black students, and to uplift and empower students' voices within our school, community, and also to provide a safe space to promote friendship and solidarity among Black students.
How are we meeting our goals? So, one of the many ways we reach our goals is we ask the people who come to our BSU meetings what they would like to do in our meetings, what games they would like to play. And just overall their input, we tend to do games like Agree to Disagree. We bring a topic that is going on in the real world, some stuff, and we have them agree on certain topics. For example, we did one meeting a couple weeks ago where we were asking them, like, do you think, what do you think cultural appropriation is? And how, like, in society, where do you see that? And we presented to freshmen about the word negro... And we presented to freshmen about the word negro and how that's different from the other word and making sure they know the difference. So when their teacher might say it within learning, they're not leaving the classroom thinking that she said a slur or, you know. And then, we also conduct educational classroom presentations on racial and cultural topics. Like I mentioned, we go to classrooms to educate students on certain topics that they might not know well of. And then, we also work very closely with staff administration and peers to create inclusive, safe school community. We also encourage leaders to be involved in school and district decision and making process. For our younger students that are in our BSU clubs, we push them to be in leadership and to have that role within their community because it can help them later on. And we also hold cross-cultural workshops and events to bring the school community together. Thank you.
So, why are we doing this? Well, honestly, being a student of color is difficult when you're at a predominantly white school. This pie chart right here, the little grayish white part, is 6.3%, which is how much Black students make up in the population in Mount Lake Terrace High School. So this affects our representation. Black voices tend to be low outside of sports. And students don't feel safe to be their whole selves, but having organizations such as BSU, we can achieve true diverse representation by creating these spaces and opportunities. And by uplifting the voice of a few, we are able to influence the school culture and empower many.
Okay, hi everyone. I'm going to be talking about LSU. So, in LSU, we stand proudly as a safe and welcoming environment for all Latino students and also non-Latino students that attend our school. Our main goal is to create a safe environment where all can learn and share about their different experiences. And another goal of ours is to bring awareness to various topics that surround our community. Also, a big goal of ours is to host events where people can celebrate their identities and just have fun. And we also love to get back to our community as a club. Next. So, how we're reaching these goals is that we, first of all, facilitate meetings where we can engage in fun learning activities. Also, we hold group discussions that really allow us to dig deeper into different kinds of topics in our community. And as leadership, we create presentations for all the people in our club on the topics that surround the Latino community as well, so we can, you know, teach people what they're not really aware of. We also attend and help plan various events with admin and other unity groups. Something, for example, we love to do is plan the Latinx graduation. And also, the multicultural assembly is a really big thing for us. We just love to bring that to our school. And we also volunteer at various events like galas and surrounding locations like churches nearby. The reason why we're doing this is just because we want to make a positive impact on our community. With the many issues that our community has to deal with, they're often pushed aside and ignored. And a lot of individuals don't feel seen and represented in schools. So by choosing to educate and discuss these issues and host these events, we know that we are trying our best to bring happiness to our school. Um, next. We have any questions, slide, if anyone has any?
Okay, no questions? Okay. Well, thank you for letting us present and letting us show how we are impacting our school community.
All right. And thank you so much to Mount Lake Terrace High School students for coming. I know you have a lot of competing activities and schedules and you're very busy, so we appreciate seeing you here tonight. Lastly, in light of our work for the Vision of 2044, we've asked a couple of students from Briar Terrace Middle School who are going to come and share some vision that they have and some issues they'd like to raise to the Mount Lake Terrace City Council. So we have Emily Francisco and Evie Courtney.
Hi, I'm Emily Francisco from Briar Terrace and I'm here to talk to you about plastic. I came here when I was in 3rd grade and talked about the same thing and then again in 7th grade. Now, I came back here today to restate my message. And I'm bringing it here again because this is still a very big problem in... Because this is a very big problem in most schools. When I was in elementary school, I conducted an experiment with the permission of my vice-principal. I put out a regular-sized waste management compost or recycling bin and had everyone who had a hot lunch that day put their plastic cutlery in it when they finished eating. One class was on a field trip that day, but the bin still was filled to the brim. This is a huge problem because this is happening every day in many, many schools. Did you know that it takes 100 to 7,000 years for plastic cutlery to decompose? It would be much better for the environment if whatever schools were able to could switch to metal cutlery instead. I understand how hard it would be to achieve this everywhere, so wherever you can would be extremely helpful to our environment and the school districts. Not only would we be spending less money on single-use utensils, we would also benefit in the long run and help the environment.
Hi, I'm Evie Courtney from Briar Terrace and I'm here to talk about sidewalks. I walk to school every day and there are no sidewalks for a long, for like, a lot of my walk. And this is dangerous all the time, but especially during like, the winter when it's dark during the morning. I'm sharing the road with the cars and I could get hit and stuff. That's it.
All right, so tonight's meeting is being recorded and will be available on YouTube. As a parent of a middle school student and I have a volunteer with youth, I'm just constantly amazed by these kids and the things that they bring to our community. And I'm so glad that you welcomed us here tonight to share some children messages with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I was hoping we'd get a chance to address our folks here today, and so I'm going to just go ahead and do that. First, let me demystify what is going on down here. "I'm not feeling that well, I'm fighting something, that's why I'm down here." All the parents right now do is, "Did that man shake my kid's hand?" Nope, a fist or an elbow, I promise, I was thinking about you all. That said, I just really wanted to pause and say, as an educator myself, you have a council that's full of educators here, but some of us do it formally. I used to be in higher education, but I have a spouse who's your high school teacher out there, so some of you may or may not meet her at some point. But just know that we had the honor of having two of our kids go through this school system, so we know how strong it is. But at the end of the day, it's what you all make of it. So for the youngest ones in here who have a lot of runway left, please make the most of your education experience. We're putting a lot more pressure on you to do that, so I just want to make sure I say that out loud. Showing up like, today, tonight, is an example of investing in yourself. You could be home, your parents would probably appreciate that. You could be home and instead you said, "No, let me come here and quite frankly, add to the history of this city." So when we just mentioned this is going on YouTube, it's going to live there forever, but it's actually part of this city. And this city is very young, so for what that's worth, you've got a lot of time to still shape this city. And then for the older students in here, I just wish you all very well. I can only imagine how your experience has been at the actual individual level, but we have been watching at the larger level and trying to do what we can to support you. You have gone through school like no one before you, and that goes all the way back when we didn't even have schools, right? I'm talking now, we had established schools and we disrupted that in the middle of your life. And you all are still standing here doing awesome, presenting, thinking about others, and just wanted to acknowledge that. So again, for those of you who have the long runways, those of you who have the short runway, whichever you do, just try to make sure you reach as high up, as high as possibly as you can and make sure you fly. So, that said, I just wanted to make sure I said hello and also apologize for why I'm not being myself tonight. I love you all, that's why I came tonight, otherwise I would have phoned it in. And literally, we can do that now, but I said, "No, let me try to be here," selfishly. But nonetheless, thank you all for your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Salamor?
Well, first I'd like to start with the Brighton School. I have a friend who teaches there and a few of you told me that you knew Mrs. Dalton, so I just Facebooked her and told her I was having a wonderful time with students from her school, so I can't wait to hear back from her. And I just wanted, I was so impressed with the children I talked to from Brighton School and how talented you are, and I hope to come to one of your plays soon. So keep it up in your instruments. And then Briar Junior High, where I also attended. I think I remember your presentation, I swear you did something on straws, but maybe I'm a little bit off on that. But I can tell you, the Boeing Company and when we go to Washington DC, all the cafeteries in Washington DC have biodegradable, I think they're made from corn, the utensils. And I know Boeing has a big program on bio, making sure that we are recycling. But the one thing you might be interested in is looking at our garbage service because a lot of it isn't being accepted like it used to be. And I know other counties aren't accepting glass and there's a whole lot of things going on with that, but it's a good field to be in. And I'm so impressed that you did this, you said in the 3rd grade? Yeah. I mean, you're beyond your years, I mean, or beyond my years when I was your age, so keep it up. And then, I can't see her from here, but she's also from, there she is. I love that smile. So, I can tell you a mile away, but also safe routes for school is a big thing that our city's been looking into for years. So you don't have to tell us on camera, but you can tell us maybe the street that you walked down and we can look to see if we have that planned for a safe route to school because we get special funding for that. We've put in a lot of different sidewalks going to certain schools. Sometimes we can only afford to put it on one side of the street and sometimes we can afford to do both, but it is a dangerous thing and I'm glad you brought that to our attention because most people don't think about that. And so, you are also beyond your light years in thinking ahead. And last but least, my favorite school, Mount Lake Terrace High School that I also graduated from, so I feel like I'm all connected to you all in some sort of way. But I was just saying how I saw you when I drove in and I said, "I had no idea that you're a high school student." You guys look so composed for your age and so put together and so well-spoken. I am so impressed that I just hope that you guys feel it in yourselves too and take this on. Not everybody, like Councilman Witterd was saying, would come to a meeting like this. And so, you're beyond your years too of thinking ahead and how you can really make a difference and just keep it up. You know, I know some of you are going to be graduating soon and going to college or whatever you go off to do, you know, just make it the most of you can because you're the ones who are making the difference in the world. So, thank you all and your parents for bringing you as well and coming here tonight. It's just wonderful, it really touches my heart. And I know I almost cried with you too because this is very touching. And what you just said to me up on the stage over here is sometimes we forget to hear children's voices and young adults' voices, and so today was a good reminder, I need to listen a little bit better. So, thank you all.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I was going to say, I would echo all the wonderful things my colleagues already shared, but also wanted to say a big thank you. I'm about four years into my service on council and this is by far my favorite meeting of all of the meetings that we have had. And that says a lot because we have lots of amazing meetings and we have done lots of amazing things. But I think one of the things that my colleagues probably would, you know, agree is that one of the things that I am passionate about is the value of hearing young people's voices and the perspectives that each of you bring. And it is so nice to have that so front and center as part of one of our meetings. And I hope that this is not the only time that you come and visit us. I hope it is not the only time that you share your perspectives and your voices with us as a city, you know. Wherever you go in life, I hope you take time to share your perspective because it matters and you have valuable things to share that will make your community better. So, thank you for being here. Thank you to all the parents and guardians for bringing folks today. It is just wonderful and I wanted to give a special thank you. So I have the honor of being our liaison, our council liaison to our DEI Commission, and I just want to thank them for all of their work helping to, you know, further this. I mean, further bringing people into the conversation and into participation with the city. They are just, they're an amazing group and I just want to applaud them for all of the positive impact that they are making. And I want to give a special thank you to Karam who, this was his, you know, he brought part of him to the conversation when we were talking about ways to engage our community. And this was really driven and built off of that idea. So, just thank you to all of you and I'm excited about kind of what the future holds for both our DEI Commission as well as our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Councilmember Ryan?
I wanted to thank the high school students and the middle school students for coming, but I'm a little biased because I really want to thank the elementary music teacher and the choir for being here because I'm a retired music teacher from Muckelteel School District for 34 years. Thank you.
And we heard about some of the things that you have to do. Okay, Mayor Potem, did you want to say something?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, just thank you for being here. We love hearing your ideas. Well said, we absolutely, you guys are our future. So, this is, if you haven't heard, Vision 2044, we're updating our comprehensive plan. This is our, every 10 years, we have the opportunity to shape our community and make policy this year, so we want to hear your ideas. Sidewalks, absolutely. Plastics, recycling, key. Love hearing what you guys are doing with student unions and in your schools, fantastic, love hearing about that and to see how we can adopt some of your ideas into what we're doing here in the city. Other than that, April 23rd is the day we can turn over our seat to somebody? I'm ready. Bring it. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to go again?
I just wanted to say, since we have this momentum going, I know our city manager mentioned it, but on April 20th, we have the cleanup here, starting at 9 o'clock. So if anyone's interested in helping clean up a park or a parking lot, I know it sounds fun sometimes, but on a Saturday morning, you get up, you put your, you know, jeans and tennis shoes on and you're just out in the environment and you really get to just take a big, deep breath and just kind of relax and meet people. So, please feel welcome to come, we'd love to have you. And that's the 20th on a Saturday.
Thank you. I don't know what more I can add to all of this, but I do know that the future, you are the future. So, people have to, I always say that we have to listen to the young people because we're going to be gone, you guys are going to take over. And I know a lot of people don't like it when I say that. But that's the truth, right? So, and I just want to just mention that my, the neighbor's kid is all grown up over there, right? There's Lindy over there. We share a birthday and I just, and I remember her daughter from Facebook from when she was born, when you were pregnant, when you got married. It's just so nice to see all of these things happening. Okay, I guess that is it. Thank you very, very much for coming and hopefully we'll get to do this again next year, if you're up to it. Oh, we do? Yes, on the 20th. I guess we'll take a three-minute break? We're back in session. And we have a report here from the presentation of an end of legislative session wrap-up with our Gordon Thomas Honeywell State lobbyist, Shelley Helder, who also has three little ones.
Just two. Yeah, don't, don't, don't get more in my ass.
Did I last one to yours?
Just two. Yeah, sure. Yeah.
I have friends with triplets, and that was on my mind.
Yep. Well, good evening, Council. Good to be with you. And especially with everyone in such high spirits. It's an eventful evening. So yes, I am here this evening to report on outcomes of the 2024 State Legislative Session and to answer any questions that you may have. Before I jump into tonight's presentation, I just want to mention that there is a comprehensive written report included in your council packet. So what I'm going to cover tonight is very much the highlights. If you want some riveting reading, dig into that report, and I'm sure you'll be asleep in no time. Okay, so this is what I plan to cover tonight. A just high-level overview of the 2024 Session, outcomes of the city's, or the city's top priority. I'll touch on outcomes of a couple other additional legislative issues, and then wrap up by talking about next steps. So the 2024 Session was the second year of the biennium. It's always a short 60-day session. The legislature's primary goal in the short session is to adopt the supplemental budgets, and then they also have the opportunity to change laws. The supplemental budgets are intended to be minor changes to the existing biennial budgets. And that's, for the most part, what they did in the short session. They also considered over 1,500 pieces of legislation and ultimately passed 376 into law. And you can see on the screen, this is a, a chart comparing the pieces of, the bills that have been introduced versus the bills that have passed into law over the last three years. Obviously, in a long session, you have more bills that are introduced and more bills passed. But there's not that much of a difference between the number of bills passed in the long 105-day session versus the number of bills passed in this short session. And, and as you can see, it has grown since the last short session we had in 2022. So I don't see this pattern changing. I think there will just continue to be more and more ideas that are thrown out there for consideration. I shouldn't say thrown out there. They, they are thoughtfully developed. The political climate for the 24 Session was very similar to the first year of the biennium. Democrats still had strong majorities in both chambers. The new dynamic, though, was the presence of six initiatives. So as everyone knows, initiatives are pieces of legislation that are sponsored by the people. So they're typically, bills have to be sponsored by legislators. Initiatives are sponsored by the people. And the legislature has three options of what to do with an initiative. They can adopt it as presented. They can amend it, and then both the original and the amended version go on the November ballot. Or they can do nothing, and the initiative goes to the people in November. For six, for three of the initiatives, parental rights, vehicular pursuits, and state and local income tax ban, they chose to adopt the initiatives as presented. And so those are now law. They take effect June 6th. For the other three initiatives that all have an impact on the state's budget, repealing the Climate Commitment Act, long-term care opt-out, and the capital gains tax repeal, those three initiatives will be on the November ballot, because the legislature chose not to take action on those. So the three, I mentioned, there's three state budgets. The operating budget is the largest of the three. It pays for all state agency operations. The largest expense within the operating budget is the K through 12 education system. The February revenue forecast showed 1.2 billion in additional revenues from the last time that the revenues were, last time the revenues were forecast in development of the biennial budget. The supplemental budget allocated an additional 2.1 billion, and so that brought the biennial budget to 71.9. So another way of saying that is, the biennial budget was 69 million. They increased it by, sorry, billion, was 69 billion. They increased it by 2 billion. It just gives you a sense of the, the scale of the supplemental budget. It's very, very small. Some of the important things to note in the supplemental operating are an elimination of the cost share for the Basic Law Enforcement Academy. So for the last several years, any local agency that's sending a new recruit to the Basic Law Enforcement Academy has had to pay for 25% of that training. The supplemental budget eliminates that cost share requirement beginning July 1. Another notable investment was 34 million in grants to local governments for homelessness housing programs and services. So that's a, a good chunk of change that will hopefully trickle down into communities. The capital budget is the smallest of the three budgets. It is, it funds public and nonprofit construction projects. The supplemental budget is 1.3 billion, and so that brings the biennial budget to 10.3 billion. Again, recognizing there that the supplemental budget is very small relative to the biennial budget. The additional 1.3 billion is primarily funded with Climate Commitment Act money, federal funds, and Model Toxics Control Account money. There was very limited bonding capacity available. And so the, the limited capacity that was available went to projects that weren't eligible for those other three categories. Because the Climate Commitment Act funded so many projects within the capital budget, majority of those projects don't receive their funding until January of 2025, and that funding is contingent on the initiative failing. Some of the major investments in the capital budget are housing, behavioral health, and education. And then the final of the three budgets is transportation, and this funds the state's highway system, which includes the ferries, also funds active transportation, transit, and all transportation-related state agency operations. This has been and continues to be the most constrained of the three budgets, and was, was a difficult, difficult to get balanced. The supplemental budget does allocate a billion of new spending. Again, majority of this funding comes from the Climate Commitment Act and federal funds. And then there was some advancing of Move Ahead Washington revenues. Because they're Climate Commitment Act dollars, they're contingent, again, on the initiative failing and not available until 2025. I do want to note that the traditional transportation budget revenues, so gas tax, licenses, permits, fees, those are all down 8% since the biennium began, which is roughly $56 million. The supplemental budget did increase the amount of funding going towards maintenance and preservation, state maintenance and preservation. And so that brings the total over the biennium to 1 billion, which is the largest amount that the state has put towards maintenance and preservation in, perhaps ever, but at least in the recent history. So now, moving on to the outcome of the city's legislative priority, we had one priority for the short session. We were requesting 2.1 million for Phase 2A of the Main Street project. And we knew that this was a very ambitious request for a short supplemental budget year, but this was the need. And so this is, this is what we went to Olympia asking for. And, and we had really strong support from our delegation. We had a, a two-pronged strategy to try to maximize the amount that we could secure. The first is, we submitted a capital budget request. This is the most traditional way that cities secure funding from the state is through, it's called the Local Community Project Process. This process requires a legislative sponsor, and we had both Senator Solomon in the Senate and Representative Davis in the House as our sponsors. Representative Ryu also supported the project. You just only need one sponsor, so she deferred to Rep. Davis. And, and as I mentioned, in the capital budget, there was very limited bonding capacity. LCP awards are done with the bond, with state bonds. Legislators were told to prioritize their projects. Representative Davis prioritized the Main Street project as her, as her request. As budget, as House budget writers were developing the budget, they were looking for any and all reason to take projects off the list. One of the things they looked at was if a jurisdiction had previously received an award and had not, had not used it. And so we have received an award in 2018 and in 2021, and both of those awards were not yet under contract. And so that, that caught, that essentially was the roadblock we couldn't overcome. I did have a conversation with the lead House budget writer explaining that, like, just helping him understand the magnitude of the Main Street project, and how limited funding options there are, and how much time it takes to pull together all the funding for this scale of project. And, and that resonated. I think he, he very much understood that challenge. I, I, it frankly was just, any, they were looking for any reason to, in a short year, to only prioritize projects that were, that had the greatest, most emergent need. And so because this wasn't going to be the last dollar in for this project, it was, it was just difficult. So that was the reason that we didn't receive any funding in the House proposed budget. In the Senate, Senate budget writers were not as concerned about the fact that previous awards had not been spent, but they only awarded 42,000 to the project, which would have been fine if it was in addition to what the House was going to award. And that was kind of the strategy amongst the 32nd District legislators was to combine. And so the, the outcome ended up being not what anyone had intended. The second prong to our strategy was support, supporting the creation of, oh, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Potem. I appreciate what you just shared, but I kind of want to pause and back up and say, my understanding is, we have a chance to come back at this specifically by January. Do we think we can put together an argument, I'm gonna have to call it an argument, we've got to sway somebody here, that would answer whatever that person's hesitation was without truly pinning it on one person, but kind of recognizing culture at the same time?
Yeah, good question. And I, I was gonna get to this later, but I think it, yeah, it's good to address it. The 20, in this session, we, we got the information back to budget writers to help them understand that the 2018 award would be under contract and would be used this year. And that, you know, barring anything catastrophic, that will be the case. And so that will be off the table for the 2025 cycle. And, and I think we, we will be much more proactive in communication with our legislators as well as budget writers about what the status of the 2021 award is, and how this funding request in 2025 will help us use the 2021 award.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since we're asking a question, kind of a related question, I guess I'm curious if that, if you have thoughts on then, kind of how we structure projects in the future. And like, to your point, these are huge projects, and we have Main Street Phase 1 and Phase 2. Because of that, like, I guess I'm curious, the pros and cons of like, a big project versus like, smaller incremental pieces of a project that kind of combined to, to complete the whole?
Yeah. Yeah. It definitely phasing projects helps. The state always wants to be the last dollar in. When, when you have a project of this size, it's difficult to be the last dollar in. It's something that I'll also get to later. But pursuing, pursuing grant programs, even if we're not successful, helps in, in that strategy. So I'll, I'll speak to that more in a minute as well.
Thank you.
Yeah. So the, the second, the second thing that we were working on to kind of increase capacity for this funding opportunity was to support creation of a transit-oriented development infrastructure program. So House Bill 2160 would have created a kind of statewide standard for zoning around transit facilities. And it, and it had a grant program for cities to upgrade infrastructure near transit centers. And, and so we were, we were engaged in making sure that that grant program would have worked for the Main Street project. It passed the House and stalled in the Senate. I, that's one where I don't know if this will be back next year. I, I am confident there will be a desire for TOD legislation in the future. The budget included direction for Department of, I think it's Commerce, to, no, Joint Transportation Committee, to receive input from jurisdictions that are doing comp plan updates in this cycle, and to find out what the, what the best practices are around, for zoning around transit, to find out if there's any gaps, and then to provide policy recommendations for how to address those, both incorporating affordability as well as any displacement concerns. So I don't know that creation of a, a grant program within a broader TOD policy bill is going to be something that's considered in 2025. But I think the message that if, if we are wanting to achieve greater use of transit, and we need to increase density around transit stations, then we have to provide funding for infrastructure. I think that message can very much continue to be emphasized, and should be. Yeah, I think I covered most of that. Okay, so I mentioned earlier, the legislature considered over 1,500 pieces of bills, or pieces of legislation, and, and ultimately passed 376 new laws. I just want to touch on a few of the, the bills that passed that have, are of interest to the city. So first, on the topic of housing, the supplemental budgets included an additional 127 million for the Housing Trust Fund. It's on the capital side of things. And then on the operating side, nearly 24 million for housing assistance, which includes long-term rental subsidies, permanent supportive housing, and low and no barrier housing beds for unhoused individuals. This is in addition to what was included in the biennial budget. So, and the amount included in the biennial budget is not fully spent. So it's continuing to be spent over the second year of the biennium. This, this adds to that. There were several housing bills that passed, but I'm just going to mention two. First is House Bill 1892, and this creates a Workforce Housing Accelerator Program. And this would be administered by Department of Commerce. The program's intended to address the need for financing for housing to serve individuals earning between 50% to 80% of the area median income. The Housing Trust Fund is, it focuses on housing for individuals at 50% or below AMI. And so there's, there's a gap in that 50% to 80%, if that's the, the audience that the housing is intended to target. So this program would help meet that gap. The second is Senate Bill 6173, and this expands the use of $1,406. These are the dollars that jurisdictions had the option to opt into, their credit against the state sales tax. And previously, those dollars could only be used on housing projects and programs to help individuals with 60% or lower AMI. This bill allows use of those funds for projects or programs up to 80% AMI. If it's developing housing, that's for home ownership. So a little bit of a, a tweak to the use of that funding. We'll see if it, if it makes any effective change. On the behavioral health topic, this, this continues to be a major issue for, for the legislature. This year, they passed House Bill 2088, which extends the liability protections that are afforded to emergency responders. And it extends that now to co-responders. And this is an important policy change in order to attract and retain the workforce, the co-responder workforce. And then they also passed Senate Bill 5853, which expands the 23-hour crisis relief model. This is a model that's been successful in other states and just became a model in, in 2023 for adults. and just became a model in, in 2023 for adults. This bill passed in 2024, expands the model for minors, so long as the facilities serving minors are separate from any facility serving adults. With some of the opioid settlement funds that the state received, they allocated 1 and 1/4 million to the Department of Health to purchase naloxone for all first responders in the state. And then the supplemental budget allocates 48 million for 17 different community-based behavioral health facilities around the state. And these are all facilities that have already been cited and needed some additional funding to finish. Then the last category that I'll touch on is city finances. Again, the legislature considered raising the 1% property tax cap. And it was looking surprisingly promising early, earlier in session, but just again succumbed to political challenges, did not pass. It was evident, though, through that process, and especially after the bill died, that there is a lot of sympathy to the plight of local governments. And so, and I, legislators wanted to do something else to help. It's not gonna address the systemic problem. That was one of the reasons for eliminating the local match for the Basic Law Enforcement Academy and wanting to funnel more dollars down to local governments through the operating budget and the capital budget through grant programs. Which brings me to next steps. My, my recommendation is always to begin with gratitude, especially when the outcome isn't what we wanted. It's really easy to be overwhelmingly appreciative when we got exactly what we wanted. And it's just, it's harder to be grateful when we, when we didn't. But even though the outcome isn't what we wanted, legislators still put their lives on hold for 60 days to do the work of the state. And so I would just encourage each of you, when you, when you're interacting with your state legislators, to, to just recognize their, their sacrifice and, and thank them for the work that they do for, for the city, for the district, and for the state. As I mentioned, there were numerous changes to state law, and many of the bills that passed will have impact on city operations. So I think I'm just, I'm flagging that for your awareness, that city staff is, they're, they're aware and they're gonna have to, there's, there's gonna be more work for them to make those changes. There are also several dozen grant programs that are open now or will be open in the next few months. And this, the state is, they've, they've always had grant programs and the city has done a good job of taking advantage of a lot of them, specifically for recreational projects. It's becoming more and more common for them to funnel money through grant programs. And so not only is it good for us to be aware of that and so to be on the lookout for those opportunities, but to also take advantage of them. And to take advantage of them is, means that it requires city staff's time. And so I, I'm mentioning it to you all this evening so you know that if, if, you know, if we're gonna be successful in getting more money, it's gonna take city staff time. Even if we're not successful in receiving funding through grant awards, having gone through the process and said that we applied, this is where we were ranked in the funding, we were below the funding level, that, that increases our chances of then going to the state and saying, can you please help us? It's not last dollar in because we didn't get the grant in, for the category that we applied to, and so we, we need your help. That's more compelling than, please help us. No, we didn't apply to the grant program because we didn't think we'd be ranked very well. And it feels defeating, but it's important. I think gets to kind of your question, Councilwoman Murray, about what can we do? I think specifically for some of these massive projects, they, they have to be phased and broken down into components that are logical enough to make the project efficient, but perhaps align more with, with grant programs. Like, for example, Main Street is, it's utilities and it's, it's sidewalks and it's bike lanes and, and it's, it's all these things. And individually, there is a lot of, there's funding for some of those. But as a massive project, you kind of get disqualified because it's like, well, that's for the utility upgrade, not for the, the bike lanes. So how a project is structured can increase its chances of funding. So between now and the next legislative session is referred to as the interim. Interim months are the best time to meet with legislators, best time to meet with stakeholders and kind of identify what you, what your priorities should be for the next legislative cycle. It is also campaign season. The entire House and half the Senate will be up for reelection. That's both members of the city's House. So Representative Davis and Representative Ryu. Senator Solomon is not on the ballot this year. He will be in two years. We'll also have a governor's race and several other statewide elected offices are up. So the 2025 session will, is, is bound to be very different. There's a lot of unknowns and three initiatives that potentially, if passed, will have significant impact on state budgets. So again, a lot of uncertainty for 2025, a lot of changes. But we do know that the state will need to adopt an operating capital and transportation biennial budget, no matter what. And that they will be back in Olympia considering ways to improve state laws. So if we have ideas of how to better the city through any of those mechanisms, that's what we should be working on and preparing for, for 2025. So with that, are there any questions?
There any questions?
Okay.
Okay, you can go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Shelley, for being here and sharing the insights of the 24th session. First, obviously, our top priority continues to be Main Street. We'll find out more in a few months with Raise Grant, and hopefully we'll be successful there and that will make our jobs a lot easier moving forward. But the other one to keep an eye on is the Supreme Court. I know you're aware of this, but with public defense, and I am terrified of what that's gonna do to our budget. I'm already frustrated with the amount of money we're having to spend on criminals or, sorry, public, public defense for potential. Anyway, it's a big chunk of budget that we can't afford to continue spending. I mean, there's, and there's so many other areas that we're seeing the costs rise that we can't afford. And I'm not asking the legislature for more taxing authority. They need to look at the impact and either fund these state mandates that they're throwing at us or rescind them or change them, have a different impact. We, I appreciate that they are aware of the need. But don't pass the taxing authority burden onto the local governments if they're the ones making the decisions for us of what we have to do. So that would be, I think, our potentially second priority, depending on how things go with Main Street and then obviously Ballenger Park and finishing off anything we need to do there. But thank you for being here.
Did you want to go? Okay. I don't see any other hands going up. Wow. That was a good wrap-up, and we have a lot of thinking to do. Thank you very much. Oh, did you have another question?
No, I didn't have a question, but I do realize we should pause and say, somebody else put their life on pause for 60 days, although they make a living doing it. But still, thank you for your service. I've had the honor of seeing you in your element, and it's truly humbling just to see your colleagues, how they respond to you, and then also just knowing that you're prepping us to do the best that we possibly can in an usually very challenging situation. Don't take that very lightly. So really just wanted to pause and just say thank you for your continued leadership. And granted, we can feel your pain because it's our pain, but we recognize you really do care that we didn't get these, you know, funding, and we appreciate that. And I think our residents will recognize that that is me. We're coming at this harder the next time. That was the question that we're really trying to get at is, okay, where do we go from here? Because every year is gonna be a short year, no matter how we look at it. But it's great to have the infrastructure and the leadership, so thank you for that.
Yeah, my pleasure. And thank you all for trusting Gordon Thomas Honeywell and me for, to be your, your voice, your eyes and your ears down in Olympia. I really do appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Okay, so next on our agenda is the review and vote on agreement with Tour de Terrace with our Parks, Recreation and Parks Director, Jeff Betts. Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm going to need to recuse myself as I am a board member for Tour de Terrace.
Okay, so do we have to vote on that? Okay, you're just recusing.
Well, good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem and council members, I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation Parks Director for the city. And the item before you tonight, as mentioned, is to review and vote on the 2024 Tour de Terrace Use of Public Property and Lodging Tax Revenue Allocation Agreement. So the Tour de Terrace organization hosts one of the largest seafarers sanctioned events in the region, and it's located right here in Mount Leiteres. The event has been held every year since 1994, with the exception of two pandemic years, there were no events. But it's held traditionally at Evergreen Playfields right off 56th Avenue West. And also, there are some pieces of that event on 224th Street. The event this year will be held Friday, July 19th through Sunday, July 21st. The event offers free admission for all ages, although there are paid activities within that free admission space, such as the carnival, there are vendors and with food and things you can buy as well from the street fair. So Friday night is the traditional parade that features the Seafare Pirates along 56th Avenue. Saturday events also include a pancake breakfast as well as the classic car show. And then, as mentioned, there are all weekend-long events, which that includes the carnival, live music with the Beer Garden, food booths, street fair, and there are dozens and dozens of vendors. So this year's event of note will not include a 5K run again or a firework show. So those two kind of traditional activities aren't coming back still. So the agreement before you closely follows agreements with a few changes. So one of those is in response to, I think, some of the community concerns we heard last year, as well as staff concerns and Tour de Terrace's concerns as well. Section 2A12 identifies that all events and activities must cease by 11:00 PM daily. So no event activity for participants will be allowed after that time, including the Beer Garden, Carnival, Concerts, Street Fair, or any of the vendors. So as mentioned, this was a change identified by Tour de Terrace, and we just discussed that with them. And they noted that there were neighbors that were not happy with noise continuing past that time, which is understandable. So they have committed to make that change and to talk with their vendors about wrapping up a lot earlier so people can get out of there and, and be quiet after that. So another change is that the portable restrooms and hand washing stations that they normally purchase for National Night Out to use will not be included in the agreement. And that was a city request. And it's really just for us to be able to stay more organized. That way, we can order all of our things that we need for National Night Out, for the restrooms and hand washing stations, with the same vendors that we utilize for 3rd of July and the other events that we do. It makes it a lot easier if we can control those things ourselves. But they are still allowing us to utilize their tents, tables and chairs for National Night Out, which is key because that is a, it's a huge cost to the city that we could avoid. So the city also will now be receiving two booths on the street fair on 224th. Typically, we have one booth that council comes down, sits out and answers questions, depending on whatever issue is at the time. But this year, we figured that we needed more space. And really, that's because the boards and commissions do intend on being there and they have things that they want to talk to the community about. And then also, we have the comprehensive plan happening this year. So that was requested of staff as well that can have some additional space to get input. So that will be a much-needed change for this year. And then there are additional ongoing changes from traditional agreements. So this past year, there was private security added to the event itself. And that was actually very successful this past year. This is the police chief's words. So he was very happy with that addition. And it was something that they talked about together, Tour de Terrace and police. And actually, Tour de Terrace, the ones that volunteered that idea because they felt like they needed more, more eyes on the crowd and people that were coming going. So they did add that additional layer of vigilance really to the event. And there were quite a few issues that were diffused before anything could happen. I know there were quite a few reports of things that they found and things, other issues that they resolved before anything could occur. So that was a much-needed addition. So that is gonna continue. And that security company has also had ongoing discussions through our police department so they could coordinate activities. And that was one of the issues, I think, they, they talked about last year is they wanted to be able to have some direct communication. And so one of the ideas we've had is to have let the head of the security for that company to be able to have like a walkie-talkie or something like that to communicate directly with police on site, so they don't have to try to chase somebody down. They still can call 911, but we're gonna have plenty of officers on site as well that could actually react a little quicker that way. So the, the security company are not responsible for arresting people. They're really just extra eyes on all the events and things that are happening to help alert police to potential issues. So additionally, our police department does create an operations plan for every event that the city does, and this is no different. So they create an operations plan for the parade, and that's something they do turn in for our special event. And then also, they create one for the carnival. So that's an internal document that we utilize and definitely especially police utilize. So they understand everything they, they would like to accomplish for an event like that and, and any backup that they would potentially need. So additionally, the agreement includes a city allocation of $15,000 in lodging tax revenues, and that was previously approved by the council on February 15th. Tour de Terrace would be responsible for notifying the community a minimum of seven days prior, which is also in our code, and it's similar to all other special events. They typically do that with banners, media advertisements, social media, as well as flyers. The city also assists with getting the word out as much as we can regarding the event date and times. And that's twofold, so people know what's gonna happen. And then also, the street closes. So we want people to know not to try to drive there because the road's blocked. So something that we continue to strive to do, especially on social media and let people know ahead of time, signage on the street that's closing, all those things that we do. So the agreement outlines continued support for the event, which is very similar to previous years, including in-kind support for police, park services, public works. They're all listed on Exhibit A of the agreement. And then additionally, city staff have talked about changing the allocation for the parade policing. And really, after discussing this in detail with police this year, they have staffed that parade much higher levels than what the agreement has shown. So we wanted to actually reflect real numbers and real hours. So that has been included, that's been updated a bit. The, that's really the big changes and some of the ongoing changes, I should say, also. And this year, we really look forward to another good event. I think that it will be. There's quite a few other vendors that they've been discussing. I don't want to give anything away because they may not have signed all those agreements yet and want everybody to be surprised when they show up. But I think it's gonna be a lot of fun this year. So it's, it's a great community event and attracts many thousands of people to Mount Leiteres. So will I take any questions at this time?
Do we have any questions? Do we have any questions? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff. Appreciate the report and excited to welcome Tour de Terrace back. It's one of my favorite summer events, and I know it's an important part of our community. So I'm excited that they're continuing to move forward with the event. I guess, question out of just, I know you don't have to know this, but I know one of the things they've been working on in recent years, and along with vendors, is parade participants. I'm curious if we've heard when that process is opening up, so that we can try to help get the word out to, to folks in our community.
I have not heard who is applied to be in the parade yet, but I think that a certain council member is in charge of that typically. He's recused himself, but I can get an update from, from them on that. I haven't heard if they've opened that up yet. But yeah, that's something we can look into and try to get some information to the council.
That would be great. I think historically, that has been a free entry, and I think our DEI commission would probably love to think about how they could help get the word out. So that would be great. Thank you. A couple, I guess, one, just thank you for, you know, taking all of the community input into account as you were crafting the plan for this year and partnering with Tour de Terrace, I think specifically around the ending time and security. I think we heard a lot of feedback in recent years on those pieces. And so I appreciate all of the intentionality that went into incorporating those conversations into the planning for this year. Do you have a couple, I guess, a question about the 5K? So you mentioned that that's not coming back this year. I know that that was a part of the events, but also was kind of run separately by our local PTAs. I guess I'm curious if there's any, has been any discussion about trying to find some other, whether that's the city or some other nonprofit locally that might be interested in bringing that event back? Because I do think it was a great event that kind of partnered in well with all of the fun, and I'd love to see it come back at some point.
The event takes quite a few volunteers, and that's kind of what's hard to, you have to have a lot of people willing to help out that day. And we've talked, discussed internally a little bit about the city putting on a 5K eventually again, and that might be an opportunity. We've talked about that as well. We're just trying to pace ourselves on the amount of events and time. And but yeah, definitely, it's a possibility to come back, I would think.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, no, I know we, I know you've added a lot to the calendar this year. So I understand. I just, I guess I wanted, wanted to inquire. And then the only other, I guess, question I had, there is one line of staffing related solely to the 5K, it looks like, with four regular and four OT hours. I don't know how important those total hours are, since there's not dollars associated with them. But I guess I just wanted to note that in case that needed to be struck before we signed to the contract.
Yeah, and that exhibit represents everything the city's donating.
Right.
So you're right. Yeah, I mean, it's, that one could be deleted, but it's nothing tied to it dollar wise.
Yep. Okay, great. Well, thank you, Jeff. Appreciated and excited to, to, yeah, join the festivities when we get there this summer.
Did you want to go, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If there are no further questions, I will move to approve an agreement. Oops, sorry. I'll pause.
I was just trying to look for one more piece of information, but it said, so we'll be charging 15 hours of overtime unless there are additional police needed or any other services? Because it said in here what we'd be charging for overtime.
So anything that exceeds that, that on the exhibit itself, those are the total hours that the city's allocating to the event? So if we go past that, then they would be charged for it?
It just says 15 hours overtime. And, and in the document, it said any overtime. That's why I was seeking clarification. And then also, if it's extra police or any other additional things that's said in here?
Yeah, so I'll.
And then, and the other thing too, was like Erin was saying, you said no fireworks, but the fireworks is mentioned in here as well.
Right. And I mentioned it in the memo itself of why I left that. So really, just, it's a traditional event that, that Tour de Terrace has, part of their event is the fireworks. I left it in there, even though they're not doing it. But most time when we craft this agreement, we, we don't know for certain if they're doing fireworks. We've had a lot of talks recently, and they've been trying to talk to the school district about whether they're able to acquire the insurance level that they need, and it does not appear to be so. And we can definitely strike that if we would like to. It's, it doesn't influence or affect, because they have to fill out the special event permit either way and get permission to do it.
I think it kind of safeguards the city as well in case they decide at the last minute to get fireworks. And, you know, it clearly states what you have to do to have them. So just curiosity questions. And so this, if you, this, on the 50, what were the total hours of, get back there? So even though in the contract here, it says overtime, but this overtime doesn't count in, in public works?
So the exhibit lists the overtime hours, Exhibit A, so it shows, it shows kind of the regular and overtime hours, and it's separated by department. So the total hours listed for police is 127 hours for the event. If they exceed that hour limit, then they're going to be charged for it. And so the hours have grown since last event, because we added some of the parade security hours to it. That was more realistic of what we were actually doing.
And, and the three civilians, and they go through a security company? Is that the three, two officers, three civilians, times four hours?
So the, the parade, the civilians a lot of times are either cadets, or they're just non-commissioned officers. They're, they're members of the police department, but they're not commissioned officers.
And are there security, if you could remind me, I know at the Beer Garden, they, it looked like, you know, they had security, they had hired extra. Are there security wearing vests or anything, so they have more presence? Because I don't remember seeing them last year.
Yeah, they, the Tour de Terrace contract with, with the security company that was spread out all over around the grounds. And so they are wearing security jackets, and they are in the carnival area, kind of spread out everywhere, communicating with each other, and really just their, their eyes, right, for police to, in case anything happens, they're able to communicate that.
And that's my biggest concern, is just the carnival area. Last year, we've had some issues, so.
Yeah, the carnival's a great event, and everybody loves it. It just, there's a lot of kids there, and kids get excited about being around other kids. And yeah, not always the best thing. Sometimes there's issues, but.
Yeah.
Okay. Was there anyone else before?
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve an agreement between the city of Mount Lake Terrace and the Tour de Terrace organization for the use of public property, lodging tax revenue allocation not to exceed 15,000, and city contributions as noted in Exhibit A.
Second. So it's been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have an event.
Rick, you can come out now.
Great, thank you.
I guess we can ask Councilmember Ryan to get back here before we get on to the next one.
We need to vote on the 2024.
You can free to breeze through this.
This is presentation one and presentation two.
Use land and oil.
Yes, we will accept their money.
Okay, so now that Councilmember Ryan is back, we can move on to review and vote on resolutions for park project applications, again with our Recreation and Parks Director Jeff Betts.
Again, hello, council. So the next item, as mentioned, is some grant resolutions, the Recreation Conservation Office. So we will go through these, but I'll give you a quick introduction. So every two years, the Washington State Recreation Conservation Office issues a call for park projects, and it's funded through various grant programs. So we've been successful for a number of years. We applied for grants in 2016, and 2018, 2020, 2022. And, and also this year, we've actually applied for two grants that they had outside of the cycle. If you remember, we did the Sonics Court, and that was a one-off type grant funding source that they did, the, the state put in for maintenance. And then also the COAF grant, and it's an athletic field grant essentially. But we submitted a preliminary application, and we will know about that later this year. But this is the full normal cycle. So we have essentially two projects, but there's three grants. And these have all been ran through the Recreation Parks Advisory Commission numerous times, and recommended to move forward. They've actually signed letters of support for both these projects. So skip through that. So each cycle that we do this, staff with the help of our PAC really work hard to pursue the projects that are a good match for what the Recreation Parks Open Space Master Plan identify, while also satisfying council goals and maximizing ideas that have a better chance of funding. So in 2024, we're applying for, we're proposing to apply for three grants, a youth athletic facilities fund grant, a Washington Wildlife Recreation Program grant, and a land water conservation fund grant, for a total of 1.825 million. The funds that the city has identified to match these grants are park capital funds, such as fees recovered for wireless facilities that are located in the park system, park impact fees, and street vacation funds that have been collected over the past few years. So I'll go through each project now, just to give you an idea of what we're talking about. So the first one is Evergreen Playfield Number Four. So I'll give you some background on this, the location, some description, and the grants associated with it. So as you know, Evergreen Playfield Complex is in the middle of the city. It's a complex that was constructed in 1976. So we're working on trying to replace things in that park. And kind of moving forward, we have Evergreen One done. We're working on Evergreen Three right now. That, that should be moving forward for construction in late summer, early fall. And we've had financial support from RCO the whole way. So the next phase that we're going to work on also is Evergreen Playfield Number Five lighting, which we have funding in place for, and that should happen this summer as well. So we want to propose to light the other side of the field, which has no lights at all right now, Evergreen Playfield Number Four. It's on the west side, it's highlighted in yellow here in this image. So this is just north of Terrace Park School, and it shares that field with Evergreen Five. It's an independent diamond ball field, but it also becomes one soccer field. So Evergreen Playfield Number Four, this project, would require five steel poles to be installed with concrete foundations, similar to all of our other lighting projects, with conduit, seven pull top luminary assemblies. It's a total light control LED luminaries, is what they're called. And it would complete the lighting for the entire field, so then you could actually play soccer at night there. Or you could utilize the whole field lights for events, or things similar to that. So the total project cost is $650,000, just for the one field to be lit. And RCO projects pay for 50% of a project cost. So this grant program, Youth Athletic Facilities, we applied for many times, and we've been very successful at it. They are changing the grant quite a bit this year. They are upping the total to $1 million. And so there's going to be probably a lot more competition in this grant category. So applications are due May 1st for everything in this round. We have technical review May 2nd through June 25th, and then we will need to turn that in, all of our changes and presentations. We'll make presentations via Zoom on July 18th, and then evaluation will ensue, and we'll know in October, theoretically, by October 30th this year. So that's the request to council or recommended motion. Did you want to do each individually then, before I move to the next presentation? Would it be easier?
I mean, if we have to vote on all three individually, then sure.
Okay. So do you have any questions about this project before?
No, you're right. Yeah. No, go ahead and do it.
Okay, do them all?
Then we'll do them all at the same time.
Okay, so the second project is Veterans Memorial Park Upper Plateau. So this would be two different grant programs to match each other. We have the Washington Wildlife Recreation Program and the Land Water Conservation Fund, and both with RCO. And this is to finalize the design, and then also construct the renovations to the Veterans Memorial Park Upper Plateau area. So we'll, we'll talk about a couple elements here, some I already covered, so we'll skip over those, like the schedule, same schedule. But Veterans Memorial Park was initially acquired in 1960, and in 1984, master plan that was funded by an urban forestry grant. And then we also did an update. We did a new master plan for the park in 2021 that coincided with the Recreation Park Open Space Master Plan update. So Phase One is under, going to be under construction this summer. That's the Transit Connection Quarter Project. That's with the trails and lit asphalt pathways. And then this would be Phase Two, the Upper Plateau renovations that we've been working on design for, for the past few months. And that was funded with $200,000 from ARPA funds that council approved earlier last year. So it is 8.27 acre park. It has existing features. There's not a restroom there currently, but there is a playground and a gazebo and a pathway. So this new Upper Plateau project would incorporate, and this is the first look at this new image here, that's going to be at our public meeting this next Tuesday. So we're going to reveal that here for the first time. But this is a, the project would have a new playground, and this is based on a ton of feedback that we've received from the public, with a lot of people gave input on the survey, which was exciting to see, and then also came to our meeting last time. So it would be a new 16 by 20 picnic shelter, new restroom with two family style stalls, and then we'd renovate the trail loop with new asphalt and lighting. And the Veterans Memorial would receive a nice update as well. We've met several times with American Legion, and they've given us a ton of really good feedback, so this is shaped by them. Some really needed frontage improvements to that park. When you drive by, you see the big, you know, the area that's in the way with the trees, and it just is, the berm kind of gets in the way of access to the park sometimes. And so this will make it ADA. It's around $2 million. We're still trying to hurry up and get to 60% design, so we know what the cost is by the end of this month, so we can apply. But this has been on a really quick schedule to get all this done in time. So there's two different grants, as I mentioned. There's a grant limit for LWCF of 2 million, and WWRP for 500,000. So we'd be requesting 1,500,000, so 1.5 total. So they would match each other. And then that's the same schedule, pretty much as I showed before. It's a little different with technical review and all those dates. But everything's due May 1st, and we'll find out October 30th. Any questions about either one of those presentations?
Any questions? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a, now I have questions, but just I want to make sure that I say thank you. So I think we just heard from Shelley about, you know, the importance of thinking about projects and how you plan them. When you think about grants, and I think you do a great job there, Jeff, and I think we
Thank you.
have been really, really successful because of that. And I just, I appreciate the continued work. I see it and get to experience it all the time in our community, and it makes a big difference. So thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, we can go on to the next. Oh.
Well, I'm ready to start making some motions. All right.
I thought that we had a third one.
Two presentations for three resolutions.
Right. So we're ready.
I see three right here.
I am.
All right. Okay, let's do this.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve a resolution authorizing staff to apply for the Recreation Conservation Office's Washington Wildlife Recreation Program for Veterans Memorial Park Upper Plateau.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We have a what? Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve a resolution authorizing staff to apply for Recreation Conservation Office's Land Water Conservation Fund for Veteran Memorial Park Upper Plateau.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Then you're going to do the third one. Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to approve a resolution authorizing staff Move to approve a resolution authorizing staff to apply for Recreation Conservation Office's Youth Athletic Facilities Grant for Evergreen Playfield Four.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, so next is the review of ordinance amending business license code, a business license code with our city manager, Jeff Knighton.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protam, members of council. So what you have before you tonight is the result of a comprehensive review of the business license procedures for the city. We had, we currently have a business license code that is long, confusing, and has caused quite a bit of friction among departments, which is why I took this on to try to solve the problem. A lot of what we, business licenses are required, and I've heard from members of the community that people that come and perform work at their homes, a lot of the businesses will not take on a smaller job because of the, how onerous our business license system is. And we want to solve that. We want to make sure that while we get what we need and we make sure that we process business licenses that are appropriate for our community, but we also don't put up barriers to make sure, or to exclude folks from doing business in Mount Lake Terrace. Couple other items that were of concern to me. First was the software as a service, which our city operates on a lot of different software as a service programs, but many private businesses do too. And our code, current code can be interpreted to require a business license from every vendor that offers software as a service, even if they never set foot in town. So if we were to require a business license for those providers, we would also have to approach other businesses like Safeway and say, who are your software providers? And they're not going to give us that, and why would they? So it's important to have a code that can be applied, but applied fairly across all organizations, government, sole, home occupations, you know, larger Fortune 500 companies. It can apply to everybody. Like I've told people on our, within our organization, if we go and tell Amazon that they have to get a business license from us, it's never going to happen. So why would we have something that says that it might? So this is intended to make, make our business code clear. If you're physically in Mount Lake Terrace doing business, unless you're one of the exempt categories, and I want to highlight a couple of the exemptions here. One is for some of the events that we heard about tonight, like Tour de Terrace, National Night Out. They do require a business license, but each individual, individual vendor does not. So one to make that streamlined piece, but also charitable nonprofit organizations. So if you have someone that set up a lemonade stand, you know, a child, a lot of children that were here tonight, they set up a lemonade stand during the summer, we're not going to go out and tell them they have to get a business license. If you're going to sell candy bars door to door to try to get your Little League team to the regional championships in somewhere in California, they don't need a business license. And we made, tried to make that clear under this code. This was based on the model code from the MRSC, from Municipal Research Services Center, and we modified it a little bit to include like National Night Out and those types of things. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions? Comments? Um, Councilmember Murray?
Thanks, Mayor. Sorry, I was going to say I do. So I will try to keep them brief. But first, Jeff, I mean, thank you. I appreciate the continued, you know, look at our processes and our policies to try to drive clarity and make it easier for both staff and our community to understand. I commend you for that. It's not usually fun work, so, you know. And I also, I will say, one of the things I appreciate, I was looking at the MSRC model code, and I appreciate that we have a significantly higher, we put a significantly higher kind of annual lip, like the threshold for which you have to exceed and or, you know, to be required to, to get a business license in our community. The $12,000 identified is significantly higher than their model code, which I appreciate. I think especially as we look at economic development and we look at the things that we are trying to do and accomplish in our city. I think trying to make it easier for people to locate their businesses here, make it easier for our residents to have quality options in the, the businesses they choose to bring into their homes because they're willing to do business in Mount Lake Terrace. I think those are really, really important things, and I appreciate that this policy is aiming to, to, you know, facilitate that. It did have a couple of, I guess, just thoughts, questions. And I guess I really, like, I'm trying to understand, and I looked for, you know, kind of maybe model code elsewhere and couldn't find it. But I guess one of my challenges and questions is, is for businesses that provide mobile services. When we are requiring, so our, it says, you know, part of the policy or part of the code that's, you know, before us, is that if, if a business is conducted from more than one location in the city, a separate license shall be required for each location within the city. And so I would love to understand, you know, whether that is, you know, construction or house cleaning or mobile like detailing services. There's lots of, you know, businesses that operate in lots of locations that may exceed the $12,000 threshold and may not qualify under one of the exemptions. So I guess I'm curious if there is a way to, you know, can we have a general Mount Lake Terrace license for mobile related business? I guess, how do we, how do we make that easier for those folks? Because I think that's oftentimes the feedback that we're getting, is that those kind of, those types of services aren't willing to come to Mount Lake Terrace if they are from outside of Mount Lake Terrace. And I also want to make sure that if they are located here in Mount Lake Terrace, that we are making it easy for them to, to service our community.
So that section is not intended for those types of services, and we can attempt to make that language more clear. I think probably the easiest example would be if one organization or one individual owned the three subway stores that we have in Mount Lake Terrace. They would have to get an individual license for each store. But it's not intended to focus on mobile, I need one right now, so this is what's coming to my mind, and mobile pet groomer. That's not what that's intended for. And we can try to clean up that language before it comes back to you on, actually, May 2nd. So we have a little bit of time in between. But that, that's what's intended, is the multiple physical locations, not mobile services.
That would be great. Yeah, I think that was just, at least for me on, you know, in my review, it felt like that was an area where I, it was not clear, at least to me. And so, yeah, I would appreciate if you could take a look at that as part of the revision And then I guess for, for fee free business licenses, I don't know that we called out specifically nonprofits. And I guess I would want to make sure that, like, that, that we kind of have that whole list, like that we are not charging them ideally for those, even if they are above that threshold in terms of income.
So what the system statewide changed several years ago to where all business licenses are applied for through the state. And then whatever the business is, checks the box for Mount Lake Terrace. So that's part of the state code, but we can certainly make it clear in here, it doesn't really change the meaning or nuance or anything as part of this language.
Okay, great. Thank you. And then I did have a question about the timelines. So it talks about 30 days for approval or denial. I think depending on the type of business, that can be a really long period of time, but also recognize, you know, that depending on when something comes in and the amount of things that come in that we need to build in time and space. But I guess I'm curious if there is a way to, like, I don't know if there's a way to have an expedited process, that there is an additional fee for or something along those lines. I guess I just, again, I would hate to hold up like somebody moving forward with something because, you know, especially if they are like a business who is wanting to, you know, come in and do business in Mount Lake Terrace and they can't start a project, you know, for 30 days, you know, or even get, you know, a decision for 30 days. That seems like a long time potentially.
So this was modeled on GMA, Washington Administrative Code, basically, that says if you submit a permit and you don't get a response within 120 days, it's automatically approved. So we obviously don't wait 120 days to issue permits. We set more consistent early timelines to get those permits issued and allow people to get their projects started. It's the same way with business licenses. If a business license comes in and we're tracking that data and that particular license, if it's for, you know, a new home based business, if that's not approved within a week or a denial given because, you know, you can't do mobile welding from your garage, right? If that's not done within a week, then we're not meeting our timelines. And that's something that we need to make sure that we figure out why we're not and then address that issue.
Perfect.
The 30 days is so, if something happens and, you know, it's caught on the bottom of a pile of somebody's desk and somebody missed it, that we won't be, we won't approve a mobile welding business. That's why that's there.
Thank you. No, that's helpful. And I assume that as part of this, we'll kind of revamp like our FAQs and some sort of like, here's what you need to know if you're going to do business in Mount Lake Terrace, that maybe has like our average time for approval, okay, versus like our maximum time for approval.
Right. And we want to make sure that we communicate those timelines. Those, the timelines are what's important for people. Additionally, we want to make sure we work with the Chamber of Commerce to extend that outreach so that we have multiple channels of information getting to prospective business owners because we want them to start their business here.
Yeah, definitely. And then the only other thing, I think the software as a service language specifically calls out the city. So I think in your, to your, exactly to your point about like, lots of folks use software as a service, whether that's as individuals or businesses or nonprofit. So I guess I would just want to make sure that that language is clear, that that is a, that is not just a city benefit, that that is something that applies to any software as a service that's utilized here in Mount Lake Terrace. Oh, and then the only other thing was around peddlers. Sorry, I had lots of thoughts on this. Again, I was going to say, I have lots of things I want to do and I want lots of businesses to come in so that we have great opportunity to help finance all those things. So, but the exemptions, from my perspective at least, I guess I want to make sure that like schools, like I think it talks about nonprofits and religious organizations, et cetera, but I think schools and/or minors would be helpful to include. And if it's grouped in that group, that group talks about them, like requiring that they provide them credentials. And so I guess I would just note that I feel like maybe that's overkill if a kid is selling, you know, candy bars door to door. So anyway, I was going to say that, those are my thoughts and feedback as, as we continue to, to, to work through this, but I appreciate all of the work, Jeff. And I think it's, I think it looks great and I'm excited to, to get it approved and move it forward.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. That reminds me of also on the peddlers. Would that be like someone that's like going door to door and selling, doing your roof?
Yeah, so that, selling security systems is one we see quite often, those types of businesses.
Yeah.
They would need to do, get a peddler's license. And we've, I think we've all, everybody has seen in their neighborhood where you have things like that happening and it's not exactly welcome. So we've seen some of the threads on social media when we have that. This is just take steps to make sure that when we have those issues, that we can address them.
Great, thank you.
Councilmember Salmore?
Mine are just curiosity questions, if you can just please me a bit. What's a hawker?
It's kind of old timey language, but it's people standing, you know, out on a street corner, selling whatever. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And then I just had another question. How can we list poultry, eel, fish, mollusk? I don't even know what that is. I, I know they're all either an animal or from an animal, but why do we call out mollusk?
That was, yeah, mollusks are part of, so they're very, Washington's kind of weird. In some instances, aquaculture is something that is highly regulated in Washington State. And that's why, and this is an assumption on my part, but that's why those particular items are called out in the, the model code from MRSC.
I just want to make sure, no rabbit. Sorry. We've got some beautiful rabbits in our neighborhoods. But my one pet peeve, and I always get asked this as a council person, is somebody puts their advertisement in a rock and in a baggie and throws it or leaves advertisement at your door. And to me, it's a big pet peeve, especially if somebody's elderly and they can't get to their front door, if they're on vacation, or if they're selling a house, it's just, look at me, I'm not home type of thing.
Right.
How is your approach on that when we, somebody calls something like that in?
So I don't think that under the current definition that we have drafted here, that that would be either a hawker or a peddler. Would be an advert, an advertisement, because I've seen they put their business card in the, the sandwich baggie.
Yeah, and it just, if it goes into our streams and it lucks up all our stormwater.
I believe those are tumblers.
What did you say?
So what we would do, we can take a look and see if we can add language like that, but I'm trying to pull up the ordinance here because I don't remember it off the top of my head. But I believe that advertising is one of the things that is not, I can take a look at that and make sure I get you an answer.
In the past, we've been told to call the police department, and I don't think they, there is anything with that go, who would that complaint go to? Would it be code enforcement?
Well, typically, I mean, if you, if you really want to look at it that way, it's throwing rocks, right? So that could be any number of misdemeanor crimes, yeah.
You mean they throw it in the window?
What's that? It is littering, yeah. So I can take a look at that and get you an answer and talk with our chief of police and figure it out.
That maybe can't, you know, I know it's a simple little thing, but you know, it's something that we've talked about previously.
Well, campaigning for political office, they leave everything on your doorstep if you're not at home. Is that part of what we're not going to allow them to do anymore?
And that's, that's the difficulty, that's the nuance. Yeah, and that's the nuance that we have to try to parse. And I think, I think that we can. It's just a matter, you know, making sure, especially when we consider elections, that we are, we make sure that our city attorney pays attention to that because there's specific protections for those types of things.
Okay. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you. Just a quick note, I think most of the ones that I've seen and gotten myself have not been on the doorstep. It's not somebody intentionally, like, it's usually tossed into the yard on the walkway or in the driveway or something like that. So I think there's some differentiation there that might be helpful.
Yeah. So, and we will, we'll take a look at those. I mean, we're not going to be able to cover every instance, but we can cover most.
One question that wasn't asked, and I've been wondering this for a long time. If a very, very pushy salesperson is at your door and, and you don't feel very comfortable and you don't even know why they're out there, can you ask them, when they get a, when they get a permit from the city, do they have to have one and they're with them?
Yes.
They do. So you can ask to see it?
You can. And, yeah, that's what the peddler's section is for.
Okay, because I was looking at.
Because we don't have that currently.
I'm glad you brought that up because we just had somebody, an elderly neighbor of mine called me and said, you know, there's somebody with a vest on going around with a notepad and staring at the house. And then they'd go to the next one, and then they wouldn't go to the next one, they'd walk down the street. And I said, well, you probably should call the police if that happens. But it would be really nice if, if, if they have to have, you know, a pass or the permit, if they could wear it, because it looked kind of strange. You don't want to, you know, is it somebody from the plea or the, looking at your meter? Because we used to have that, but now we do it differently. But this one was so a little bit odd of the way it was explained. So I think that's a, a security thing.
Yeah. Well, I get people knocking on my, well, ringing my doorbell. I usually don't answer anymore, but every once in a while, you, you'd get a very, very pushy person who won't leave.
And that's, that's what this is intended to address. And to be fair, it does exempt, you know, PSE, PUD, those kind of things. But those organizations typically require that they wear their official badge anyway. So if you have somebody that's not doing that, then this would allow you to request their credentials. And if they don't have them, they could call the city and we'd go out and say, hey, you need a license for that and go through this procedure.
Okay. Well, hopefully a lot of people will, will somehow get to know. Okay, well, hopefully a lot of people will somehow get to know this so that they can.
Yeah. Well, we'll advertise, if council adopts it in its current form, then we will advertise that and make sure that the community is aware. And before it comes back to council on May 2nd, I'll make sure we provide you the answers to the questions you asked tonight.
Good, thank you. Okay.
Senator Jimenez? Yes.
All right.
Yeah, assuming I answer all the questions to your satisfaction.
All right. Okay, are we done on this one?
We are. Thank you.
Next is public comment. Do we have any public comment?
Nobody signed up in person and nobody registered in advance, and nothing came in the mail, so no public comments.
All right, thank you. Review of the next meeting agenda, which is in two weeks. Okay. And hopefully everyone will be going to the dinner next, dinner meeting next Thursday. And then council comments is next. Anyone have anything for council comments? Councilmember Woodard? Yeah, Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I wanted to say the agenda for next week is too long. That said, I hope to see as many of you as possible at the, technically, it's a groundbreaking language, right?
Ribbon cutting.
Yeah, ribbon cutting implies a building's open, so it's like, you've been getting the language wrong. Point remains, Lynwood Neighborhood Center. That said, I want to be as clear as possible. It is going to be a lot of people. So if you don't want what I'm going to refer to as the orange line opening, you need to band together and walk up and demand your photo. Now, I'll do the best I can to make sure this council is in a photo, but I will not be rabbit hunting, or squirrel chasing, or cat, whatever you want to call it, herding. So, know that it's going to go quick, and if you're not there to get it done, you're just going to keep it moving. So I just want to say, I would love to have this council, all of us who show up, with a shovel or whatever it is that we're going to present, but we will have to make that happen. So, fair warning, and again, you got an inside guy telling you, it's still going to be hard to pull this off, but nothing personal, it's just, it's a huge event. So I look forward to seeing you all, and unfortunately, I will not make the dinner because I'll be cleaning up.
All right, anyone else? I think we want to adjourn. We're adjourned.